On September 1st, 2020. This is the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors originating from the Administration Building. Public access to the meeting is being provided via Zoom, and that's consistent with what we've been doing in terms of the COVID-19 pandemic for social distancing that is allowed by 21.8.1 of the Code of Iowa. I would ask anybody who would like to to join us in pledging allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
So move second.
Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda's adopted. Next, we'll have updates on COVID-19. Are there any updates from staff? If not supervisors, Supervisor Heddins, do you have numbers for the day?
I do. It looks like statewide, we have 684 new cases and nine deaths. Story County has 92 new cases, no additional deaths, and it looks like one hospitalized, at least one from Story County hospitalized.
Thank you. Now we'll have public comment number one. This comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. I'll open the public comment period, and if anybody in the public has a comment, would you please raise your hand if you're on Zoom via computer or unmute yourself?
Start six or start nine?
Start nine. Seeing, you see any raised hands?
None.
Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment period number one, and we will go to item eight, which is the bid opening for the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail Conservation Director Mike Cox. Slater connection.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mike, good morning.
Good morning.
And I'm about, we need to pull that panel back. I'll hold it up for another meeting. We can get it closer to the, you did pull that?
A little further.
Okay.
I was interested in using my cell phone that they were coming through to talk to the owl, to talk to the Zoom, to talk to the.
Mike, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. We do have four bids this morning. I will open them in the order in which they were received. The first one is from Absolute Concrete. Bid bond is complete. Bitter identity form is complete. Bitter status form is complete. And the bid amount is 169,569.50. The next is from Howery Construction. Bid bond is attached. Bitter identity is attached. Bitter status form is attached. And the amount is $97,470.40. The next bid is from TK Concrete from Pella. Bid bond is attached. Bitter identity form and bitter status forms are attached. Bid amount for TK Concrete, 1,000, excuse me, 175,925.0. 175, 925.0. And the next bid is from Concrete Professionals from Altoona. And this is the last bid. Bid bond is attached. Bitter identity is attached. Bitter status form is attached. And the bid amount is 165,107.80. 165, 107.80.
Nothing for Caliber Concrete?
No. And that concludes the bids. We will review bids and then come back with a recommendation for award.
I am curious to see about the low bid. I mean, the difference between the low bid and the next lowest bid is $72,000, which is 73% of the lowest bid, and so I'll be interested to see what you come up with. I mean, even the estimate was 131,000.
Yep.
Thank you. Next, we'll go on to discussion and consideration of items dropped before the board request for immediate action. Are there any? Seeing or hearing none, we'll go on to agency reports. There are none. Then to consideration of minutes, and we have a slew of minutes. August 4th, August 11th, August 14th, August 18th, August 25th, and August 26th. Are there any corrections to minutes?
Not as they were finally presented. Thank you. Could change that one draft.
Any, anything?
Nope.
Okay, entertain a motion for approval of minutes.
I would still move for the 4th, the 11th, the 14th, the 18th, and the 25th. It was not at the meeting of the 26th.
Okay, so the first point, is there a second then?
Second.
Okay. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. And now the meeting, the 8/26th, is their motion to approve.
I move approval of the 8/26th meeting.
And I second that motion. Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye, and they are approved. Next, consideration of personnel actions, there are none. And next is consideration of claims, is their motion to approve claims as presented.
I still move second.
Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. Next, we have consent agenda, and I'm going to pull two items just for discussion, item seven and item nine, and were there others we want to pull?
Yes, I'd like to pull item five and item 15. We say five and 15.
I also need 10. I'm sorry. Fine.
And any said what?
Seven, nine, and 10. Five and 15.
Okay.
So, I would entertain a motion for approval of consent except for those five items.
So move second.
Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. I could go quickly and do the three that I had pulled. I think they're pretty, it's seven, nine, and 10, and the considerations of appointment to the, seven is to the Board of Adjustment for an unexpired term for Laura Jondal. That term would be four months through December 31st, 2020. And similar for item 10 for Ben Jensen to Planning and Zoning Commission, because these are filling vacancies. The reason I wanted to pull those two is I just wanted to maybe get an agreement or understanding that because usually those are five-year terms, that what we could do is just place the, the new terms on a later agenda without re-interviewing the applicants. Is that a problem? Because it would just be re-interviewing them in a couple months.
I don't have a problem with it, given that we had a robust set of applicants we clearly put out for, you know, the 30-plus, 30 days, okay? And that we, I at least interviewed them with the understanding that they'd be serving a full term. And that isn't how I looked at it, too. I wasn't thinking of it as five years and four months, or only four months and then thinking it all over again. I was thinking in the generalities.
But everybody's doing an unexpired term. There's some that go on expired till 2022 or '23, so maybe we can decide then, but, and the other thing I wanted to point out was under nine, Cheryl Moss, the application got attached twice as documentation, the appointment did not, but just for the record, Cheryl Moss's appointment, this would be for a new term, because her term expires in December, so it would go through 12/31 of '25. Just want to make sure everybody do that before we vote it. So I would entertain a motion to approve items seven, nine, and 10.
So move second.
And that's with the understanding that there's a lot of interviews.
Right.
Okay, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Those are approved, so now we'll go to item five. Supervisor Olson, you wanted to pull this one, so we can start us off.
Okay, so this is the consideration of request for proposal from the Sheriff's Office for a jail video visitation system design and installation. And I did have a couple of questions, and I know that the sheriff in preparation sent John Aslison, the jail administrator, plus some other staff here. Good morning, John.
Good morning. How are you?
I'm fine, thank you. So can you just like in three or four sentences kind of recap what this is?
Basically, what it is, the video visitation, there are services in the jail that usually vendors provide or that, but they make actually some money off of it, so. So it's not going to, it's not going to cost taxpayers anybody that they're going to come in, they would actually put the equipment in, install it, and then with their long-term expenses, a five-year contract is what they probably enter into. That's how they're going to make back what their initial investment is on their equipment if they continue to make funds off of what they're doing. So the video visitation, if I use it as an inmate, I'd be charged the nominal fee for that to be able to do, so that's what they're going to make, that's how they're going to make their money. Okay? So normally, things like that, a lot of times we'll just do the contract ourselves, but we put it out for our people because we got, again, want to make it open to multiple vendors, be transparent, be open, so that way it's, everybody gets a chance if they want to come in and they want to actually try to fit it, they can.
So, my first question, thanks, because that's really good recap, okay. My first question had to do with you kept on saying vendor, and the contract talks about a consultant, confusing, so, or the RFP, you know, information. So it is more of a vendor.
Correct.
I recommend we just change the name.
Okay.
You know, to make it clear, because I read consultant, I went, wait a minute, I lost the consultant face here, okay? My next comment question is you did a really good job of note, of making it clear that this is no money to Story County. I mean, it says that probably five different places, right? My, I'm still though confused or concerned that there might be some kind of guarantee required from us. So I, you won't know until you see the RFPs, but that's my concern, is that there'll be some kind of minimum requirement of income.
And also, we would, I guess we would also have, when we get to the point where actually if we're going to sign anything, Ethan, I would have a look at it to make sure that that's not going to be as part of it as well, to make sure that any agreement that we didn't true would have to come back before you for that.
So, and then let's assume, you know, sometimes things happen. We get into, let's, we go through and we get into an arrangement with a vendor, and then we need to have a poll. So I'm thinking I'd like to see in the RFP, not only you did a really good job also about installation costs, and what's it going to cost us, and that includes the extra things that, you know, we don't think about, all the peripherals or whatever, so it's, it was really a great RFP. Maybe I'd like to see also in the event that they had to, for some reason, pull out, or you decided, we decided to switch vendors or re-did or whatever, what the cost would be to get out of a contract.
I can talk to Ethan and make sure that we can include that as well.
Okay, all right. My final one is do you have a guess at that about the cost? I mean, have you talked to other jails or whatever about what should we expect to maybe anticipate or see?
Good day. There shouldn't be any of our costs to us. There's a possibility of some revenue coming in. Did I give you a cost of what the equipment would be for the first one installation? Did I give you an idea? No.
I think I was, my concern was the cost to the inmate or the family in that.
Correct, and that's part of our, the contract renegotiation, like right now, we, we try to stay, probably FCC, what they recommend to make for sure that you're not trying to gouge the inmates or anything like that with exorbitant fees or anything like that. So our phones right now run about 19 cents a minute. So it'd be along those lines, probably a little more again that you're dealing with video visitation here, but that's something that we would also negotiate as part of the contract to make sure it stays reasonable.
I experienced with department questions with telephone contracts, and there were a lot of concerns about those because they were very pricey, so I'm glad to hear that. And it's not going to preclude in-person visits at all.
Correct. They still have, we still have the ability to do that in person as well, it's just, it will free up a lot of, and that's like bad weather, somebody doesn't have to drive over to actually visit their family, they can actually do it from home. Or if I've got four people that I'm bringing over, instead of having to bring four people over, have to wait through, you know, four, four visits, I can have one visit with everybody.
And I know these are unusual times, but normally, what percentage of the inmates that we house are actually out of county? Do you have any idea?
Usually we don't have a lot out of county, because we try to keep everybody here.
No, I'm, no, I mean, are people here from other counties?
Oh, okay. There, with the student population, we do have, I'd say probably, oh, maybe 10, 15% of, you know, people that would be not from this area.
Sure, and you also house for other counties.
Correct.
So that's where I think it really is a service that can be useful for the public, it's family members and friends, rather than, you know, and it might be that, okay, that's a lot cheaper than putting gas in my car and driving here and time and all of that, so, so it's, it's something that helps you, but it also can be seen as a service to inmates' families.
Correct, definitely. Plus it's availability, you can do it throughout the whole week, instead of having set days, you have every day you can almost do visitation.
And there are other jails in Iowa that are also utilizing something similar?
Correct, correct. Wisconsin, most, most jails are going to this, it's the future.
So, right now, you've got in-person visitation or just on the phone, right? Okay, good. So who monitors that? Is that a staff, is that one of the DOs or?
Correct, we have staff as well as volunteers to actually help with the actual visitation.
Okay. Do you anticipate greater staffing needs or fewer staffing needs?
Fewer.
Okay.
Because we shouldn't have to move the inmates around now to be actually be able to use the video visitation from their actual unit that they're housed in, rather than have to actually move them to different locations throughout the jail.
And then what about the monitoring part of it? Because it, you were, it's clear you want to be able to monitor, record, and.
Correct, it's all, it's all recorded, so we can go back and we can review, make sure if there's anything being done that's not supposed to be being done, so.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I don't have any.
Thank you for coming over here, we appreciate it.
I, go ahead. I didn't need to jump over, sorry. Yeah, I go ahead and move that we approve putting out this RFP with the changes suggested.
Okay.
Second.
And for the discussion, hearing none, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved.
Thank you very much for wandering over our desk.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now go to item 15, consideration of contract for sanitizing polling locations. Did you let the Sheriff's Office know you're going to be pulling that?
I didn't, because I only have one question, and I see Lucy Markman on, and I just wanted to know whether this mu, this will be out of the existing budget as, or as we budgeted, will we be, need to allocate additional money for it?
This is Lucy. This money actually qualifies for, we, we have some CARES money that is specific for the 2020 federal election cycle, and this qualifies as an expense under that. We do have to spend it and be reimbursed from the, from the state, who is, the Secretary of State is, we apply to them, and then they send us a reimbursement for that, so that's, you might see this in future budgets, I think this might now become like sort of the cost of doing business in terms of, since we are guests at all of our polling places, so, but for this, for this cycle, it's, it's a reimbursable item under the CARES Act.
That's not the, the CARES money that we have from the state, that's separate from, with the Secretary of State?
Yeah, they're, they're calling it HAVA CARES Act, and it's very specific to the federal election cycle. And actually, the deadline to apply for that is Friday, the 11th, so, which is why I'm hoping for approval today.
That was my only question. Thanks, Lucy.
Any other questions?
You're welcome.
Thank you. Then I would entertain a motion to approve contract for sanitizing polling locations for the special elections and the general election at 2:50 per location.
So move second.
For the discussion, hearing none. Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Thank you for putting us together. Next, public hearing items, there are none. Additional items, we will go to discussion and consideration of reopening plan for the Administration Building. Joby, good morning.
Good morning.
Done a lot of work on this, we appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Summary and final thoughts?
Final thoughts? You know, situation in the county has changed a little since we worked on this document, so I think that's worth talking about, since we are considering, you know, unlocking this building and some of the other ones, so. I mean, I think there's a workable plan that we all kind of worked together on, I submitted it on the agenda today, but I mean, if we choose to unlock, if three of you choose to unlock any of the buildings, I think we got a plan in place that we can make it work. I don't know, I struggle with whether or not that's the right decision to do right now, but, you know, that's where we're at, and that's where we've been for the last few months, so.
Well, you've done a great job, Joby, and I know sometimes you have to feel tough questions and alternatives and having to take into account a lot of people's opinions.
Yeah.
Okay, and desires and wishes, but you've done a great job.
Thank you.
So, yeah, out of this whole thing, I only had one question, just had to do with signing up people to work at the front desk.
Yeah.
With two or whatever, but, so, so you're saying that with the change, the increase in the numbers, I'm going to guess a little bit where you were headed here. You're wondering about us opening up. So from a facility standpoint, where would be your concern if we pushed this down the road?
You know, right now, you know, we all seen the numbers, what they did over the weekend for, for Story County. You know, anytime you bring additional people in, you raise that risk of exposure, and there's no real good way of a countermeasure on that as far as sanitation aspect, because outside of following every person around and literally sanitizing everything that they touch as they touch it, there's no good way to provide a fully sanitized building at all times, so. But I also understand that we are the county government, there are services we need to offer to our citizens, so trying to find that balance is.
One of the things that occurred to me was when Supervisor Merkin passed on an email to us, did she, did you guys know the double two, what, from Rick Martinez, the city of Nevada, that they were going to open up today? Anyway, I did, you haven't seen that?
Not that I recall.
Joby says that, I know. It's like, wish us the 900 emails today. So anyway, Nevada's opening, okay? My thought then about just managing, that's going to increase an expectation about people being able to access us, people get us confused anyway, but about us, you know, being open and therefore, I'm thinking about the people working down at the front, et cetera, about taking more hassle, more, more of a problem, and also, yeah, so that was one thing, and then, there's really nothing you think you can humanly do more now at this point, right? I mean, to, to, you've done all you can do for the staff to keep the staff safe.
Yes, I believe so.
And therefore, the, the public, to the extent that we're interacting with the public on our here.
Yes.
I think my question's, I think you have done a.
I think my question, I think you have done a great plan here and I know a lot of work and I think I have some questions on the other buildings versus just the administrative building, say. I guess for my, kind of for my colleagues to consider, we move to open up is kind of having that plan in place in case we have to shut things down again. Because if the numbers continue to rise as they have been, there is sports season that's going on or starting, that may increase the numbers even further. I think we just need to have, if we need to open up, then we have to have that plan, a well-thought-out plan of how we're going to announce to folks that we are shutting down, or at least the building. Still, the service is still provided, but closing the building up until the people aren't getting confused as to what's going, what's going on. We really need to take that into consideration.
I agree. I liked, let me back up. So when we received our tax bill, Ted, okay, I liked that it was right on the tax bill about that ours at the time of this printing were still closed and we could close again, or however that was ordered. So, so anything that we are sending out now that could put that on, whether it be a flood plain notice or whatever, I think would be good. Also, clearly about all of the releases saying that, you know, this is always something to change due to, you know, the COVID situation. And then the plan itself, didn't most people indicate that they would be somewhat able to close very quickly?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they all kind of gave the same answer. The more notice, the better. But we also understand that sometimes you don't have the ability to give a large notice as the situation changes drastically, you know. But I think everybody, since we've been through it the first time, we all learned from that and could, and could close and modify our operations quick enough to accommodate a short notice.
Can I interject? One, one point on that. With a quick closing, the one thing we have to consider in our office is now we're going to open up appointments if we open and people will have appointments for probably between five and 10 days out. The end of the month is when property taxes are due. So if we do have to close the building, we're going to have people who have already scheduled appointments that are then going to get their appointment canceled at the end of a month, which could cause some real heartache among citizens that want to try to get their transactions done before the end of a month where property taxes are due. So if it looks like we're going to close, I don't know what metrics we're going to use for closing the building. The more notice, the better for us because then we can shut off any future appointments. But it is going to be an issue we're going to have to face in our office because I'm pretty sure once we put appointments out there, they're going to fill up in a hurry. So that's, that's all I wanted to say about, I mean, our office is capable of closing down quickly, but I know that it will be a hardship on a lot of people who have scheduled appointments for a few days out.
Ted can ask a question. You don't have appointments scheduled now. You haven't started scheduling any, correct? Okay.
Nope. We will, we'll wait until the board decides on more of a concrete timeframe and then we'll let, we'll use the scheduling software and start making them available.
Okay. I'm glad you brought up the issue of the metrics and what metrics or what we would use to decide to close. Because that does bring us back to the metrics that we decided to use a few months ago when we talked about how we would open. And we followed the Trump administration's guidance, as everybody will remember, and what that, what that called for at that time was a 14-day downward decline in new positives. We are nowhere near that. We, as people have said, we have, I mean, we're the Ames, which is two-thirds of Story County residents is the number one hotspot right now, according to the New York Times and other sources. The Trump administration has just said Iowa should close more bars, should close more restaurants or reduce seating in restaurants. I, and, and I just think this is the worst time to be considering reopening. I can't vote for it. I know that we have needs for public to enter our buildings to do business. That biggest need is in the Justice Center right now. And that's because the courts have said that they have to start jury trials. They have to get those going. I have no problem with the sheriff saying then, you know, opening today because he's part of the justice system and he's intricately involved with that. Same with the county attorney's office. I see there's a real reason to have Justice Center open to the public. I honestly do not see what the huge need is to have our other buildings open to the public right now. We do different business. We have a lot of different services in the county. We also have different physical structures. And some of those physical structures make it easier, you know, to keep people segregated in a lobby that's just right off your main entrance. And if Justice Center's set up well for that, I don't think our other buildings are. So I just need to say I have some real concerns. We said at one point we needed to see declining numbers. Our numbers were small when we said that, but our numbers are very large now and they are going up. And we've got concerns with the metrics we're using anyway because the Iowa Department of Public Health seems to keep losing numbers or say, oh, we didn't count those. I guess we should count those now. I think this is not a good time and I'm going to be voting no. And that's all I have to say about it.
I like to.
Can I make one more comment?
Yeah.
The Treasurer's Office is pretty inundated with activity right now. It is easier for us to do title work in person. It makes it go faster. However, we are in September now. And if we had a situation where our office had to shut down for two weeks because we had a few positive cases, it'd be pretty catastrophic for us. I think yesterday we did about 600 or 700 property tax payments. That's two people pretty much working all day at it. So if we were to get behind where we couldn't come into the office, we'd have a real struggle getting caught back up with property tax and our motor vehicle work. So while I think our office would benefit from speed if we could reopen, I know that it is a huge risk if we have to close down. The mail would pile up in a hurry. We would not be able to cash a lot of checks. I know that that's an issue. People put a large amount on those property tax checks and if they're sitting out there for three weeks, it could be messing with their bank account. So this is a board decision and I'm going to let you guys make it. I'm just letting you know, our office right now is, is definitely not a great time. Our office has got struggles either way, I guess is what I'll say. It, we could work faster if we were open, but if, if we're open and we have an outbreak of some sort in our office, this would be the worst possible time of the year for that. So I guess that's the end of my commentary. I'll let you guys sort it out.
Well, I remember the point that you made several months ago when we did close and you said then that if a hardware store has to close, there's another hardware store down the street. But if the Story County Treasurer's Office has to close, there's, you know, there's nobody else here to process your motor vehicle registrations, your property taxes, whatever. And I, when you said that, I thought, that makes a lot of sense. And I used that example when I had, when I did, you know, field calls. I don't know that we can keep people totally safe because our employees, like everybody else, goes to shop and does, you know, whatever. What we can only, we can't eliminate risk. And I think Joby said that very well. What we can do is reduce risk when we see something that looks pretty risky and looks like maybe a gamble not to take right now. So I appreciate your comments, Ted, and I appreciate the hard work your staff have been doing all these months.
I have a question for you, Lynda, related to if we stay closed and we're really talking about just not unlocking the front doors, we're still talking about people bringing in for appointments by appointment only, correct? If we're not going back to the very beginning, it's just that we're not moving forward.
Correct.
Okay. So Joby, or at all, okay, in the administration building, right? We will have another election coming up and we have mentioned this a couple of times. I know that the auditor wants us not to make decisions based on that. But at the same time, I'm back to how do we discuss about the times of over-the-counter vote? I mean, how do we accommodate that if we've got, if we keep, I mean, if the doors are completely locked?
I'd have to have a, you know, Lucy, if you could weigh in, you know, her and I have not spoken specifically about the general election coming up in November. We just kind of took it one election at a time. Granted, the one in November, in my opinion, is going to have a lot more turnout than the current election we have going on now.
It's tall as well for the November 3 election.
I see Lucy unmuted herself. I'm going to let her speak.
She did and then she muted back up.
Yeah, this is Lucy and that's a great question because we have been able to accommodate both the primary and the special elections we have on September 8th at Darla's desk there in the front lobby and limit the building exposure to the lobby area. That's just not physically possible with the size of the election. And in-person voting begins October 5th. Now, I could do in-person voting somewhere off-site here, but that is its own, that, that, that's also complicated. So, I mean, nothing is ideal about any of this. I do currently have the Assessor's Conference Room reserved for in-person voting. I looked at, you know, some of the stats we have. We could expect up to maybe 250 people a day choosing that option with all of the concerns about the postal system. That's also going to drive maybe more foot traffic than we would have expected. I don't know. I think we're going to be busy, we're going to be busy with the mail. We're going to be busy in person. We're going to be busy on Election Day. Yeah, it's, it's the board's decision. Whatever you decide, I will, I will react to that and, and set something up that works for Story County. But it's a, it's a lot of people per day starting October 5th, which is a little over a month away from now.
Yeah, I appreciate that information, Lucy, and also the information from Ted. I do have concerns with the rising numbers within our community, particularly since the White House has said, you know, we should be shutting down more. That gives you a lot of concern. I hear exactly what Ted's is saying and Lucy's is saying. And Ted, your analogy that you said, Lynda, you had said it before too. I've used that exact same analogy when people said, why aren't you open yet? And I could be a kind of analogy of what happened in the Treasurer's Office and they're like, oh, I never, I never thought about that. You know, how do you do that? I think that we do have other things that we have to consider and here. If we were moved to opening at least the admin building, so what I'm focusing on right now versus the other buildings, because I know we had one time talked about opening them all up at the same time, but that's, that's not going to be.
Right, that's how it is. So that's, that's.
Yeah, the point of this. Then if we just look at opening the building, I would say that I would want to look more towards the latter part of September to do that. That would give a little bit more time, give some notice out there, would give more time to get whatever setup that, you know, thinking of the general election, that, that Joby and maybe Lucy need to flesh out a little bit more for the building here. But then also have, you know, maybe a week's time before you have that in-person voting so that everything else is all in place. And that is just something I would throw for consideration. I heard Lucy saying we should could look at property or location. I just have to wonder, I mean, she would have the connections, but you're still going to run up against and have to have your staff in there and other materials in place to help mitigate as much as you can versus here you may be able to have a little control.
I have, I have a lot of respect for the Auditor's Office, especially when it comes to a presidential election cycle. Having, many years ago, followed them around for a day as a journalist, but also having watched just for the gubernatorial one here in the building or whatever. I mean, this is a major undertaking, a huge undertaking. And then for them to have to move off-site for part of this. I mean, I just watched what happened since they set up a satellite location and you're seeing people and, you know, running around with equipment or whatever. So I understand very much that if they could keep it here or in the building in some fashion, that that works well. I'm not opposed, by the way, to be putting this off. It's amazing what one week's worth of rapidly rising statistics can do to a position. Okay, so I want to let you know about that, all right? I'm not opposed anymore to putting this off. And yes, we're not going to all be the same date now. We just know that and that happening. So if we looked at reevaluating this, let's say as we head into the, I guess, the third week of September, the third meeting of September, which would then, if we were looking then pushing it out a week before open possibly, and then that still gives a week before, what Lisa was saying, October 5th, you know, when Lucy's got to open up, that would give us a better idea about where we are in the county. So, yeah, I, I'm on board with you guys. Not the worst of the week.
The trade more weeks, the 22nd of September?
Yeah.
That would be four more weeks.
Four more weeks. Yeah, four more. I think I am on board with the schedule of September, you know, headed to the, close to the end of September.
There, yeah, there's what, five Tuesdays in.
Oh, okay.
In September, so.
Three weeks is the 22nd.
Okay.
So, yeah, I, yeah, those numbers are just like, whoa. And we didn't have those one week ago. We were just sitting here.
Right. Is the county attorney on? Let's see, the county attorney. What I was thinking, the reason I brought that up is when we talked in another meeting, the sheriff said he's opening today.
Right.
The county attorney said he could open any time and I think was ready to open. And I think it's because, you know, there's already people in that building and they've got a locked door, you know, and a lobby area. I'm wondering if we would not want to change our homepage and just what it says that, because it says the Sheriff's Office is closed, only the courts are open. Maybe we would want to change our homepage on our website to reflect that the Justice Center is open and just leave it at that. I don't know that we need a motion to do that. I think that's the direction that's going there. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I guess we're, we're kind of combining the two. We have one just to be added in building and the other building. To me, yes, the Sheriff's Office opening, that building could be open. It sounded like from our conversation before that the engineers' building could be open or whatever. They don't get a lot of just drop-in foot traffic, I guess.
But, yeah, but then we'd be consistent if we left that front door shut or, you know.
Yeah.
Because I didn't know there was ever a lot.
There's too much to them, but I think Justice Center's the one that gets foot traffic. It's getting to customers now. Criminal justice is to customers.
Well, I'm just thinking, if you're going to put something on the webpage, you're going to want to put on a webpage, okay, the Justice Center is open. If you put the engineers open, or not necessarily need to do that.
I don't think you need to.
And if it stays closed for now.
Right.
Conservation.
Conservation is closed for right now. I think the other question then becomes the human services center.
Yeah. Do we want to move to the, because these are two separate agendas.
We're fulminating the conversation in together.
Okay. Is there consensus on the first agenda item that we will revisit the opening of the admin building? That issue on the 22nd? And then we can, if there is, take the motion that we revisit the opening of the admin building on September 22nd. And then we can, if there is, take the motion that we revisit the opening of the admin building on September 22nd. Okay, discussion?
I guess my only question of that is, we still say no, is that still, in the meantime, will Joby and Lucy, uh, Lucy's going to need to know for that in-person voting enough, enough time if she's going to have an off-site in-person voting location or invite.
So the onsite to invite.
Here, I'm just wondering if that, do we have that discussion still enough time?
You know.
I'm not saying that you, I, I just want to make sure.
Well, I think they need to start talking now.
Yeah.
So. Yeah, and, and, and have some kind of a, just let us know what the, what the direction is on that.
Certainly if we put on the agenda earlier, if we want to have, right, well, the discussion on it.
We, we have to do the election. I mean, we have to have the in-person voting. That's the one thing we know we have to do. And we've already done it. We did it for the primary in June. We did it in, you know, we're doing it now. The only thing is this is going to be a larger volume. So I honestly think that we, whatever we can know about what the auditor's office is going to need as resources might inform our decision on whether or not we're opening.
Would that be a conversation for the CCMT team to, with, on a Wednesday, on Wednesdays as updates headed into a recommendation from the CCMT team headed on the 22nd?
Sure.
I mean, you know, that's what I'm thinking is, it's not that we won't have any information, but at that point it will be working out of logistics, which we're trying to, which one is one thing the CCMT team is doing. And then the recommendation comes forward saying, here's what we want to recommend as of September 22nd. Could even push it back to have a special meeting on the 25th, right? Would that be the Friday?
I think let's shoot for the 22nd.
Okay.
Lucy, any final thoughts on that?
Uh, no, that's fine. I'll talk to Joby and work out a couple of different options. If that's acceptable.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Lucy.
So then, we're done with the, okay, this was a question. Okay. Wilson, Austin.
Aye.
Ted.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're going now formally to number two, which is reopening other county buildings. And I've made the suggestion that we consider the Justice Center open.
Yes.
And we kind of started talking about others. I personally, the engineer's obviously just so little, you know.
Yeah, I can read you exactly. I don't know if Darren's on that.
I don't know if he needed to have a separate thing or not, but it is separated out on here. That's where my thinking is coming from.
Yeah. I mean, I can read you exactly what Darren, his feedback about the engineer's building. It says, "We really have no input on the reopening. We are good with whatever is decided. It has little impact on us as we have been getting the public business done even with the office closed. We meet most people out in the field anyway." Thanks. There.
My sense is just to leave it the way it is for now.
That's okay.
Human services is, oh, somebody's got to hand up.
From there to the chat, just so you guys are aware. Oh, Julie just said we are open to the public at the county attorney's office.
Yeah.
Okay, county attorney's office is open. That takes care of that question. Thank you, Julie. Okay, so, um.
Animal control is, so I understand closed.
Yeah.
Due to staffing.
Right.
Staff level issues.
They were never open 40 hours a week anyway.
No, they had reduced hours each week beforehand. So, you know, they're getting everything done. So.
The one thing I would ask that or just to confirm is just, you can stand or confirm if somebody sees an animal they want to come meet, they're still doing that by appointment, correct?
They still do all that.
Yep.
Okay, super. That work. Yeah.
Things that animals will consider. Stay, stay currently, right?
Yeah.
Stay close where they currently are.
Stay locked.
Do them by appointment.
Stay locked. That's it. Stay locked.
Yeah, stay locked. That's, that's, yeah. Conservation, it looks like they are having their discussion on the 14th, so really congrats to human services.
Yeah.
Building.
And to me, as you can, in there, it sounds like the, you know, the county attorney's office was literally the only office that if the front doors unlocked, they were the only ones that were going to unlock their lobby door. So that building, as every other office, DHS, the community services, at least in the very beginning, they were going to keep their main lobby doors locked.
And I see that Pauline rather.
Yeah, I invited her so she could provide updated input if need be. So to me, if 90% of the building lobbies are going, juvenile court services is going to have theirs locked, we're going to remain locked, why unlock the front doors?
So I want to, I see Carla's up there too, but either Pauline and Carla or Carla. Okay. The issue though was a little bit about are we missing people who are walk, who need services who for some reason feel they need to walk in? Don't, you know, uh, do we need to get them to that lobby phone? Right? That you talked about putting up a list of the phone numbers to call if you need immediate help.
Yeah.
So Carla and Pauline, Erin I see is too, could you please weigh in on what you think the value is of having the front door unlocked so they can get to that phone?
This is Carla. I mean, that, that does provide another option for folks to get in touch with the offices in this building. You know, I, I believe the front door is seeing quite a few people. Um, just different staff have commented to me that the front door is pretty busy with people dropping things off or coming up to it. So, um, it just provides another avenue for them to be able to come in and call because we are, we would like to go to an appointment only process, um, especially with our lobby doors being locked, um, within our office. So it, it just provides another avenue for folks to get in touch.
The thing is they have to go into that main, all the way, you know, you come in the front doors there and it's the phone's right on, on the other side of, it's not in the foyer portion part where you could be dialing in to make an appointment or anything. That's.
Is it possible to unlock the outer doors but not the inner doors of the atrium?
We'd have to add locking provisions on the inner set of doors.
Oh, they're not locked. Okay.
You'd have to run line for that phone.
Yeah, and then we'd have to relocate the, relocating the phone would be the easy part.
That might be something for continued conversation. Uh, you know, you hope this is the last pandemic that we're dealing with and the last situation, but we don't know. And there may be other circumstances where we really need to have phones in that kind of foyer area and those other set of doors that are, have the capability of locking that.
Pauline, did you want to say something? If so, you need to unmute yourself.
Uh, sorry, I just wanted to just add that we would prefer the lobby not be opened up to the public. Part of it is, um, we deal, we have to go into the lobby to use the bathroom and different things like that. And we deal with a homeless population that tends to like to stay in there. So that's a concern and that scares the girls that are in the office. The other part is, um, we're concerned that if people know that the lobby is open, that they'll come in and they won't social distance and they'll be knocking on our door and wanting us to provide them service in person. That's a concern for us. I will say though, that, um, we've not had a lot of, um, we've, well, first of all, we had no complaints about how we have things set up now with the, um, the boxes outside that have, provide the applications and the Dropbox where people can drop, um, items off to us. We don't have staff in the office other than, um, a support person who mans the phone and, um, greets the courier and different things when things are delivered, um, and does printing and stuff in the office. And maybe a supervisor and workers stop in on occasion to print things, but even if people came to our office, we would have no staff there to assist them with questions about income maintenance or applications like food assistance or Medicaid. And our social workers are all by appointment only at this point. So, uh, we, we would just advocate to keep it appointment only and continue to, um, have the building not open to the public.
Pauline, so do you have the majority of your staff working from home then? And how long is, do you have a nice sense for how long the state's going to have you working off, predominantly offsite?
So yes, the majority of our staff are working from home. Our income maintenance workers who are the workers that sit at a desk and determine eligibility for food assistance.